Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the March 2nd, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Present.
Alderman Beer.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Fontana.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Kubek.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Stanford.
Here.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum. Mr. Mayor, as a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. From time to time, we celebrate those people in our community, those residents who have achieved a great deal, who have brought honor and pride to the city of Milford, and tonight we are joined by many of them. These teams that we have here, both our cheerleaders, Eagles cheerleaders and Eagles football players, have represented us well, not just at the local level, not just at the state level, but the regional level and nationally. And we have four teams, and I would like to call each team up individually, starting with the Eagles Junior Peewee Football Team. If the Eagles Junior Peewee Football Team can come join me at the front of the auditorium. And they're joining us with their medals and their trophies. And in recognition of their accomplishments, I do have a proclamation which reads, whereas the 2014 Milford Eagles Junior Peewee Football Team comprised of 24 young men from Milford has brought honor and pride to themselves and our community, and whereas the Milford Eagles Junior Peewee Football Team competed in the Pop Warner National Championship Football in Walt Disney World Florida, the team's journey to qualify to play in the Super Bowl began with winning the Southern Connecticut Conference Title, the Connecticut State Championship Title, and finally, the New England Regional Championships. And whereas the team members Wesley Buzell, Joseph Capello, James Cobain, Tyler DeSilva, Max Dempsey, Michael Devaney, Christopher Engel, Connor Francis, Christian Janes, Tennis Joshi, Derek Long, Ryan McNellis, Ryan Mendola, Kevin Pacanowski, Joseph Rogers, Nicholas Saku, Ryan Saku, Joseph Sansone, Raoul Valley the Second, Naim Washington, Chance Wasmer, Dylan White, and Justin Williams, together with Director of Football Larry McNellis, Head Coach Lawrence McNellis, and Assistant Coaches Peter Saku, Christopher Engel, Kevin Pacanowski, Philip Mendola Jr., Kim Dempsey, Michael Cobain, Charles Devaney, and James Sansone assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm, and played championship-level football as a testament to their own abilities, coaching expertise, and desire to win. Now therefore, I Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the City of Milford, on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby extend congratulations to the Milford Eagles Junior Peewee Football Team and extend this expression of our pride in their accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine manner in which they have represented our community. And we do have proclamations for all of you men. But in recognition of your accomplishments, I have a proclamation on behalf of the City of Milford, which reads, whereas the 2014 Milford Eagle Peewee Cheerleading Team comprised of 12 young ladies from Milford has brought honor and pride to themselves and our community, and whereas after winning the Southern Connecticut Conference, the 2014 Milford Eagles Peewee Cheerleaders went on to win first place and secure the Connecticut State Title. They then placed second at the New England Regional Championships, qualifying them to compete in the Pop Warner National Cheerleading Championships in Walt Disney World Florida. The team proudly brought home a bronze medal for the small Level II Division. And whereas cheerleaders Sophia Dana, Stephanie Fair, Tatum Gay, Elizabeth Hibson, Nicole Jones, Sarah Paulus, Elia Prozer, Amanda Kieroz, Kaylee Smith, Lauren Strifolini, Kylie Troy, Marissa Turner, together with Director of Cheerleading Leah Torres, Head Coach Tanya Dana, and Assistant Coaches Mary Ann Smith, Angela Paulus, Christina Smith, Alex Gurman, Angie Fair, Brittany Tobin, Miranda Gencalves, and Brenda Dodd assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm, and competed in championship-level cheerleading as a testament to their own abilities, coaching expertise, and the desire to win and show true sportsmanship. Now therefore, I Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the City of Milford, on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby extend our congratulations to Milford Eagles Peewee Cheerleading Team and extend this expression of our pride in their accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine manner in which they have represented the community of Milford. Congratulations. Now I made the offer to the last group that if they wanted to do a team cheer, they had that opportunity, and extend that same offer to you folks after this proclamation. You could either accept that or not, but congratulations. And on behalf of the City of Milford, I have a proclamation that reads, whereas the 2014 Milford Eagles Junior Midget Football Team comprised of 34 young men from Milford has brought honor and pride to themselves and our community, and whereas the 2014 Milford Eagles Junior Midget Football Team recently competed in the Pop Warner New England Regional Championship Game. The team secured the Southern Connecticut Conference Championship and went on to win the 2014 Connecticut State Championship. They ended their 2014 season as the Division II Regional Semifinalists. And whereas football players Cameron Banyai, Riley Berry, Michael Becker, Jordan Benoit, Max Black, Jesus Carrera, Nick Constantini, Cole DeSilva, Dylan DiFelice, Thomas Dempsey, William Ives, Andrew Janick, Eric Johnson, Kapish Joshi, Tanner Lucy, Teddy Morrow, Joseph Mendillo, Ryan Mola, Sean O'Connor, Efren Ortiz, Zach Pissaro, William Phalen, Richard Piscatelli, Michael Plaskin, Kevin Pacanowski the Second, Colby Primavera, Max Kieroz, David Ramirez, Brian Robertson, John Shannon, Tyler Stanko, Walter Stebbins, Shane Supple, and Jason Turner, together with Director of Football Larry McNellis, Head Coach Kevin Berry, and Assistant Coaches Tom Dempsey, Rob Johnson, Jason Lucy, Mark Manning, Don Mendillo, Josh McNary, Rich Piscatelli, Kevin Pacanowski, MJ Shannon, Mike Shannon, Randy Stebbins, and John Strom assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm, and played championship-level football as a testament to their own abilities, coaching expertise, and desire to win. Now therefore, I Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the City of Milford, on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby extend congratulations to the Milford Eagles Junior Midget Football Team and extend this expression of our pride in their accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine manner in which they have represented the City of Milford. Well done, men. Nice work. Nice work. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to call up the 2014 Milford Eagles Junior And they have come with some serious hardware. And as I read this proclamation again, if there is a team cheer or a team chant that you want to do at the end, we welcome that. On behalf of the City of Milford, though, I do have a proclamation which reads, whereas the 2014 Milford Eagles Junior Midget Cheerleading Team comprised of 31 young individuals from Milford has brought honor and pride to themselves and their community, and whereas the Milford Eagles Junior Midget Cheerleading Team placed first after competing in the Southern Connecticut Conference. They went on to win the Connecticut State Title, bringing them to the New England Regional Championships where they placed second and qualifying them to participate in the Pop Warner National Cheerleading Championships in Walt Disney World Florida. The team proudly placed second in the large Level III Division at the National Championships and proudly brought home a silver medal. And whereas the Milford Eagles Junior Midget Cheerleading Team members Brianna Aguilera, Leah Burrows, Haley Caligero, Cassidy Davis, Stephanie Ferrara, Amber Fershey, Roy Glass, Caitlin Griffin, Leela Harris, Natalie Hubler, Alexis Jennings, Kayla Jurzick, Audrey Lane, Bella Lee, Yasmina Ngaghi, Alexis Licio, Trinity Lynn, Mackenzie Mayer, Natalie Mazza, Molly McKenna, Elizabeth McKenna, Erin Maurer, Joanna Nelson, Han Nugan, Sunny Nugan, Emily Rednack, Alma Rodeniesic, Aniseember, Kelly Strom, Courtney Thompson, and Gina Thompson, together with Director of Cheerleading Leah Torres, Head Coach Jennifer Magden, and Assistant Coaches Michelle Connor, Casey Gegslettler, Des Gill, Yvonne Jennings, Olivia Mazza, Jen Murphy, Kyle Thompson, Leah Torres, and Leah Zinski assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm, and competed in championship-level cheerleading as a testament to their own abilities, coaching expertise, and desire to win and exhibit true sportsmanship. Now therefore, I Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the City of Milford, on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby extend my congratulations to the Milford Eagles Junior Midget Cheerleading Team and extend our expression of pride in your accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine manner in which you represent the City of Milford. Well done. I apologize if I mispronounced any of your names. Mr. Chairman, the 2014 champion Eagles cheerleaders and football players. Now, Mr. Chairman, I may recommend or suggest that you may take a brief recess, five-minute recess, while we allow some of these young men and women to go home and do their homework.
We'll take a five-minute recess in order to let the young people leave the auditorium. We are going to resume the meeting. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Alderman. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wanting to address the Board can do it at this time. Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Michelle Kramer. I live at 104 West River Street, and that's going to be a very difficult act to follow. I won't be doing a cheer, but I did bring handouts. I don't like to go anywhere empty-handed, so I brought some handouts. And if the Board would like to pass these around, I have enough for everyone. So I'm sorry if I'm going to be repeating myself to members of the Ordinance Committee, but I wanted to just, first of all, say thank you for your consideration of this ordinance. I think it's an important one, and I think most of you know that it was an offshoot of the commemoration of the 375th anniversary of Milford's founding. Milford is blessed to have a very rich collection of colonial homes. It is what defines our city. It's what people come to visit when they come to our city. When they come to visit my house, they don't ask to go and look at the post road, they ask to look at the historic centers of Milford. So after the 375th anniversary concluded, my question to the Board and to members at large is, will Milford rally to support its dwindling collection of 18th-century homes? Now, members of the Preservation Trust and members of the Historical Society recognize that the best way to prevent demolition and destruction of historic properties is to foster appreciation, and that's something that we try to do at our monthly meetings, workshops, lectures, and the like. But if we were to visit the Plan of Conservation and Development, which we are tasked to do, city officials are tasked to look at that, if we use it as a template for development, then my question is, why don't we use it as a template for preservation? There are 10 pages in the Milford Plan of Conservation and Development devoted to historic preservation. It speaks to preserving residential neighborhood character. It states that the city's desire for preservation can only be achieved through understanding which properties are culturally and historically relevant and doing what it can to save them, and that's what we like to think our role is. In addition, it states that the Connecticut Trust's Historical and Architectural Resources Survey of 2006 should be a high priority of the city, and that the city should utilize the survey as a guide for preservation efforts and to update it as needed. Now, updating it is what our Preservation Ordinance is attempting to do. We are trying to identify those homes that are relevant historically, architecturally, and culturally, and giving willing homeowners, willing homeowners who sign a consent form, giving them a vehicle to save their homes, and to list it on a state or national register. And I'm going to just briefly say, some points from the Plan of Conservation and Development include creating additional historic districts and encouraging owners of historically or architecturally significant properties outside the two local historic districts to create preservation easements that guarantee the preservation of their properties. And in conclusion, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I know we have other speakers. I would like to say that I think Milford is very blessed. We have a deep harbor that comes right into the center of town that allows people to bring their boats, walk to the historic district. I would like to know that when, I won't be here, but when the town celebrates its 400th, I would like to know that some of those important structures still stand. So I thank you, and I ask you to consider this Preservation Ordinance.
Good evening. I'm Richard Platt, 132 Platt Lane. I have a couple of handouts for you, which I want to give you first. First of all, my scrapbook, which shows Milford's lost buildings, that is, houses that were, we had here in town and that are gone. And, of course, I want to get it back, so I'll start over at that end. And then I have also a handout which shows just a timeline of preservation in Milford since 1930, and I will talk more about that in a minute. If any of you have visited towns like Guilford, Weathersfield, Litchfield, the Collinsville section of Canton, you will see some very beautiful historic districts, houses that have been lovingly kept. Milford's record on its preservation of its architectural heritage has been spotty at the best, and actually rather troubling, really. The schedule that I'm giving you shows that since 1930, yeah, we've saved a few houses. In 1930, the Eelstow House was saved from destruction by the DAR, and the Milford Historical Society was founded. And then, I'm not going to read the whole list, but the Clark Stockade House, excuse me, the Clark Tavern where George Washington was entertained, knocked down by the Town of Milford to build the Parsons Building. Milford Rivet knocked down. And most recently, of course, the Elijah Bryan House on Gulf Street. It's been a rather poor record, and so, really, I think we've got to do something. Once these houses are gone, ladies and gentlemen, they are gone, we cannot bring them back. And I do not want to have to add any more houses to my scrapbook. I had to go out and buy a few more extra pages to put some in there, and lost recently, and as I say, I hope I don't have to fill them up. Now, the ordinance before you to establish a Historic Preservation Commission are like a bunch of mini historic districts. We've already got two historic districts in town, local historic districts. These are for properties that are outside of existing historic districts. The map over here shows just the 18th-century houses that we have identified that are outside of a historic district. And this is not counting, of course, the fact that some owners from 19th-century houses and even early 20th-century houses that are significant might come forward and said, "I want to be a part of this." And I really have no idea how many there are. I suspect there are probably as many as 400 in that category. Not all of them are as significant as others, to be sure, but still, it's up to the individual owner to want to be in this. Nobody's holding a gun to themselves, to them, that they have to. It's entirely voluntary. And as a matter of fact, well, I'll stop right there. So I'm sorry if I'm going to be repeating myself to members of the Ordinance Committee, but I wanted to just, first of all, say thank you for your consideration of this ordinance. I think it's an important one, and I think most of you know that it was an offshoot of the commemoration of the 375th anniversary of Milford's founding. Milford is blessed to have a very rich collection of colonial homes. It is what defines our city. It's what people come to visit when they come to our city. When they come to visit my house, they don't ask to go and look at the Post Road; they ask to look at the historic centers of Milford. So after the 375th anniversary concluded, my question to the Board and to members at large is will Milford rally to support its dwindling collection of 18th-century homes? Now, members of the Preservation Trust and members of the Historical Society recognize that the best way to prevent demolition and destruction of historic properties is to foster appreciation, and that's something that we try to do at our monthly meetings, workshops, lectures, and the like. But if we were to visit the Plan of Conservation and Development, which we are tasked to do, city officials are tasked to look at that, if we use it as a template for development, then my question is, why don't we use it as a template for preservation? There are 10 pages in the Milford Plan of Conservation and Development devoted to historic preservation. It speaks to preserving residential neighborhood character. It states that the city's desire for preservation can only be achieved through understanding which properties are culturally and historically relevant, and doing what it can to save them. And that's what we like to think our role is. In addition, it states that the Connecticut Trust's Historical and Architectural Resources Survey of 2006 should be a high priority of the city, and that the city should utilize the survey as a guide for preservation efforts and to update it as needed. Now, updating it is what our Preservation Ordinance is attempting to do. We are trying to identify those homes that are relevant historically, architecturally, and culturally, and giving willing homeowners, willing homeowners who sign a consent form, giving them a vehicle to save their homes, and to list it on a state or national register. And I'm going to just briefly say some points from the Plan of Conservation and Development include creating additional historic districts, and encouraging owners of historically or architecturally significant properties outside the two local historic districts to create preservation easements that guarantee the preservation of their properties. And in conclusion, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know we have other speakers. I would like to say that I think Milford is very blessed. We have a deep harbor that comes right into the center of town that allows people to bring their boats, walk to the historic district. I would like to know that when, I won't be here, but when the town celebrates its 400th, I would like to know that some of those important structures still stand. So I thank you, and I ask you to consider this Preservation Ordinance.
Good evening. I'm Richard Platt, 132 Platt Lane. I have a couple of handouts for you, which I want to give you first. First of all, my scrapbook, which shows Milford's lost buildings. That is houses that were, we had here in town and that are gone. And, of course, I want to get it back, so I'll start over at that end. And then I have also a handout which shows just a timeline of preservation in Milford since 1930, and I will talk more about that in a minute. If any of you have visited towns like Guilford, Weathersfield, Litchfield, the Collinsville section of Canton, you will see some very beautiful historic districts, houses that have been lovingly kept. Milford's record on its preservation of its architectural heritage has been spotty at the best, and actually rather troubling, really. The schedule that I'm giving you shows that since 1930, yeah, we've saved a few houses. In 1930, the Eilstow House was saved from destruction by the DAR, and the Milford Historical Society was founded. And then, I'm not going to read the whole list, but the Clark Stockade House, excuse me, the Clark Tavern where George Washington was entertained, knocked down by the Town of Milford to build the Parsons Building. Milford Rivet knocked down. And most recently, of course, the Elijah Bryan House on Gulf Street. It's been a rather poor record. And so, really, I think we've got to do something. Once these houses are gone, ladies and gentlemen, they are gone. We cannot bring them back. And I do not want to have to add any more houses to my scrapbook. I had to go out and buy a few more extra pages to put some in there, and lost recently. And as I say, I hope I don't have to fill them up. Now, the ordinance before you to establish a Historic Preservation Commission are like a bunch of mini historic districts. We've already got two historic districts in town, local historic districts. These are for properties that are outside of existing historic districts. The map over here shows just the 18th-century houses that we have identified that are outside of a historic district. And this is not counting, of course, the fact that some owners from 19th-century houses and even early 20th-century houses that are significant might come forward and said, "I want to be a part of this." And I really have no idea how many there are. I suspect there are probably as many as 400 in that category. Not all of them are as significant as others, to be sure, but still, it's up to the individual owner to want to be in this. Nobody's holding a gun to themselves, to them, that they have to. It's entirely voluntary. And as a matter of fact, well, I'll stop right there. I think that's enough. Some other people want to talk, too.
Good evening. My name is Carter Coulter. My wife and I live at 258 Gulf Street. When we moved here seven years ago, like a number of people who moved to Milford, we were impressed with the historical character of the town, and specifically, the home we bought was between two 18th-century structures, which at that point were well-maintained by their existing owners. Now, I live next to one 18th-century house and a vacant lot. And as Dick Platt just mentioned, why that vacant lot is now, something will be in it, but it will not be what was there, and what was there can never come back. A second point regarding real estate. There's substantial research that shows that homes that are in protected areas or that have arrangements which lend to their preservation rise in real estate value in greater proportion than surrounding areas. Thank you.
Tim Chaucer, 104 Holly Avenue. A lot of people don't know this, but two houses down from where I live on Holly Avenue is a vacant lot today. That, the house that was demolished several months ago, was totally unprotected, and that's why we couldn't save it, even though the man that built it was the founder of the Republican Party in the state of Connecticut that helped to bring Abraham Lincoln into the state, General and Governor Joseph R. Hawley. This was his summer home. And we talked to the builder, and we tried to prevail upon the builder to please save the, you know, the basic bones of the house. He could not be convinced to do that. Now, had the new ordinance been in effect, we might have gotten an easement from earlier owners, because he had acquired it fairly recently, and we might have been able to get an easement and protect that house. He knew it was not protected. Hawley's statue is on the State Capitol building up in Hartford, and if you enter the north entrance of the Capitol, the State Capitol, you'll see a big medallion celebrating General and Governor Joseph R. Hawley. He was historic general during the Civil War, but perhaps even more important than that, he is the man that invited Abraham, he and a few others helped to invite Abraham Lincoln into Connecticut after he spoke at Cooper Union down in New York City, and he spoke in five different cities in the state of Connecticut. And now his house is gone, unprotected. So this is why this is important. So we hope you'll give it due consideration and vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Regina Cahill, 32 Pumpkin Delight Road, and I'm Vice President of Milford Preservation Trust. And I believe, my opinion is, that passing this ordinance and getting it in place would be such a positive thing for Milford to do, to express that we value our cultural heritage, and so many other reasons, too. But I'm here tonight, just, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the economic benefits to homeowners. I don't want to take a lot of time. I mentioned a couple of them earlier, and I'm going to mention those two that I mentioned plus a third that I forgot to mention. So the values to the individual homeowners listing their homes on state or national register, if they do decide to do it, of course, it's completely voluntary, but they will, as of July 1 of this year, be eligible to apply for the state historic homes rehabilitation tax credits. This is a perk for any homeowner of a historic home, and Milford Preservation Trust is very happy to discuss the particulars of those tax credits with anyone who contacts us, or anyone interested in listing their historic properties on state or national registers. I also mentioned, Milford was one of four communities studied in a 2011 place economics study funded by the State Department of Community and Development and the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, which looked at the increased market values of homes in local historic districts. And one of the many interesting facts that they discovered is that even after allowing for factors such as proximity to the coastline, Milford's historic district homes averaged 1% more each year in value increase than homes outside of the districts. This fits with the State Historic Preservation Office's plan called the Investment in Connecticut: The Economic Benefits of Historic Preservation. And the third thing that I forgot to mention earlier, that I really want to mention, is that owners of historic homes in Connecticut were also eligible to apply for special federal funds via the State Historic Preservation Office after Hurricane Sandy. And these special federal funds were issued to owners with properties on the state or national register who had experienced damage as a result of the storm. So any other preservation questions, please go to, you know, our website or give one of us a call. Thanks.
I'm Jane Platt, 132 Platt Lane. I've lived in Milford for 50 years, and I love it, and I love the historic buildings. So I'm hoping that you will approve this ordinance and preserve our heritage. Thank you.
Good evening. Ann Meyer, 50 Prospect Street, right outside one of the historic districts, but still in a historic home. You've heard a lot of really good reasons why we're asking for your support for this ordinance this evening. The charm that Milford has is not just the coastline. It's not just the historic homes. It's not just the vibrancy of the Post Road. It's all those things together. It's the blend of those things together. And to do away with a piece of that starts to impact negatively the other pieces. So we do ask for your support. I do ask that you look to approve this ordinance on behalf of the entire city of Milford. Thank you.
Steve Rathbun, 44 Prospect Street, and I just want to say briefly, I am in favor of this ordinance.
At this time, anyone else would like to address the Board? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, Consideration of Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting held February 3, 2015.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. There was no special meeting, and on item number five, Chairman's Report. Well, you all know how much snow we've been having, and just hoping that Marty will have a special prayer, Irish prayer, for the upcoming St. Patrick's Day Parade. Hopefully, all the snow will melt so that we can enjoy the annual event that everyone else seems to have put a lot of attention to. Right, Marty?
Twenty-five years this year.
Twenty-five years. Agenda Item Number Six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in the Agenda 8A through 8J. And I know that the St. Patrick's Day Parade is celebrating their 25th anniversary. I'm looking forward to that on March 15. Also during the public comment portion of this meeting, it was mentioned that last year, 2014, the city of Milford celebrated our 375th birthday. And as part of that celebration, the city of Milford, the Milford Public School System, and the Anniversary Committee held a competition for our students, grades 6 through 12. And a representative from both the school system and the Anniversary Committee is with us, and I'd like to invite Kathy Benetti up to help award the winners of that competition. And the competition which Kathy helped craft was the Name That Room Competition, which asked students to come up with an appropriate Milford name for the three conference rooms in our Parsons Government Center, which are known as A Conference Room, B Conference Room, C. Not very creative names, and the entries that we got were very creative, very Milford, and very difficult to choose winners, but winners we chose. We have a fantastic group of students with us today, and I'd like to call them up individually, starting with East Shore Middle School 6th Grader, Anna Byers. And Anna's entry was the Captain Kidd Room, after the famous Milford pirate who supposedly buried his treasure. No one has found it yet on Charles Island. And so, our Public Works Department has crafted an identical replica, a miniature replica, of the sign that will hang on Parsons, and it will read "The Captain Kidd Room," named by, I'm sorry. Well, Anna Byers. We'll have to fix this one. And the next winner, I'd like to call East Shore Middle School Grade 6 student Kira Grace Johnson. Kira's winning entry was, is, the Peter Pruden Room. And there is a plaque that does read correctly, "The Peter Pruden Room," named by Kira Johnson. Congratulations. Do you want to stand here? The last award winner. And the final winning entry was Foreign High School freshman Nicholas Lynn. If you'll please join us at the front of the auditorium. And Nicholas's winning entry was the En Santa Way Room, named after the Chief Sachem of the Weblogs. And we're going to have to fix this as well, Nicholas, but we'll get you that in quick form. But here's the En Santa Way Room. Could hold it. And here's the Captain Kidd Room. Mrs. Benetti, do you want to take a picture? Will you come in the picture, Mrs. Benetti? So congratulations to our winners. And with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if you have any questions throughout the meeting, don't hesitate to ask either myself, Attorney Bircham, or anyone else in the city of Milford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to the recipients of the awards. New names for our conference rooms. Alderman Veccharelli, Item Number Eight, There Is No New Business. Item Number Seven, There Is No Unfinished Business. Item Number Eight, Moving On to New Business, Item 8A, Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appointment of Carolyn Ramadan Augur, 97 North Street, as a member of the Board of Assessment and Review, to fill the present vacancy term expiring 12/31/17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Brad Gaglion of 82 Shelter Cove Road, as a member of the Pension and Retirement Board, to fill the present vacancy term expiring 12/31/17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Benjamin Gettinger, 17 Orchard Road, to complete the unexpired term of Kevin Crusaden, appointed to the Regional Water Authority Board of Directors on the South Central Connecticut Regional Water District Representative Policy Board, term expiring 6/30/16.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, with our, will our newly confirmed board members come to the front of the auditorium and get sworn in by our city clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that each of the three board members have notified our office or the city clerk's office that they're not available for this evening and will have to be sworn in by our city clerk at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the attached recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board dated February 4, 2015, for the acceptance of the donation of a parcel of land known as Zero White Oak Road, MAP 75 Block 922 Parcel 23.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
In doing my due diligence on this particular item, and having made phone calls to city attorney's office, Public Works Director Ray Macaluso, who is with Westcott and Mapes, and apparently, the Sewer Commission has not, is not aware that this matter is before us, nor have they provided an advisory role. So I would, under the circumstances, I would ask the indulgence of the Board and postpone it.
Is that in form of a motion, Mr. Alderman Anderson?
I so move.
Can I have a, motion has been made and seconded to postpone this Item 8D to next month's meeting? Any discussion? That's discussion right now under 8D. He's asked, he's asked the rest of the Board if they're in favor of postponing it to the next meeting. You're in favor of it? Is there any discussion? Alderman Giannatizio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Bircham. Attorney Bircham, is there any reason that we need to postpone this in regards to the Sewer Commission for, based on Alderman Anderson's testimony, has no notification? Are we going to just take his word for it? I mean, do we need that in order to move forward?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Giannatizio. I don't know. This
This is an 824 request that came before us, that the property owner requested to donate the land, didn't want to pay taxes on it. It's adjacent to a pump house. We put it, the request, we referred it to the Planning and Zoning Board for 824 approval, was a favorable recommendation we brought before the Board. I will defer to Alderman Anderson as to what questions he may pose to the Sewer Commission. I assume it has to do with its proximity to the pump house, but I'll defer to him. Legally, there's, we did not advise the Sewer Commission, we're not required by 824. That doesn't mean there's not a reason to seek their input, but the only entity or commission that my office contacted was the Planning and Zoning Board pursuant to 8-24, the Connecticut General Statutes.
Just to follow up, so we've met our responsibilities as a city legally, and I assume there is sewers on the street, so I don't really understand the proponents' request to postpone. I think that we should vote it up or down.
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Giantaccio, just to answer your question, legally, yes, everything has been met in terms of bringing this referral before this Board. That doesn't mean, I suspect that everybody's comfortable with voting whether to accept the land at this point, but legally, you're entitled to act on it.
Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Bircham.
I'm going to entertain a vote for Alderman Anderson's request to postpone this particular item to next month's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Local vote. Adam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Fontana?
No.
Alderman Kermin?
No.
Alderman Giantaccio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubek?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Stanford?
Yes.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
The vote was nine-six, the motion passed. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request, the attached recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board, dated February 4th, 2015, for the approval of a five-year lease with one additional five-year extension to the Milford Fine Arts Council for property located at 81 Nogga Tugav.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the City of Milford to enter into an agreement offering a certified nursing assistance program, and to authorize the Mayor, Director of Employment and Training, and/or City Attorney's Office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said program.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Fontana.
Through you to the City Attorney. I just had a question about our liability in this. If, I see there's classroom liability coverage and program operations coverage as far as insurance, but as far as these students going into the field, can someone come back and sue us and say they didn't have proper training, or the student come back and say they didn't have proper training?
Chairman, through you to Alderman Fontana. Just a little bit of background before I answer your inquiry. This program was approved in September of 1994, and has been approved on an annual basis. The terms and conditions of the agreement haven't changed. The reason it's before this Board this evening is that the agreement was historically between the city and the Private Industry Council, and the Private Industry Council has gone through some changes. It is now Workforce Alliance. So, given the change in the name, the legal name, I thought it best that it be brought before this Board, again, for approval on its annual renewal. In terms of the liability, I never say never with a lawsuit. We are protected to a certain extent by the training, but you can always claim somebody was improperly trained, so I can't guarantee that we won't, but we are quote-unquote insured for this through our KERMA policies, so we are protected.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the City Attorney. Mr. Bircham, is, are there fees involved here for taking the course, being certified? And if so, does the city realize any other fees?
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, Lisa Straight, who actually administers that program, is with us in the audience. If you have detailed questions about the ins and outs of that particular program, she may be best positioned to answer those.
Hi, Lisa. Just to clarify the fact that when people take this course, are they paying a fee to go into it, and are we charging any occupancy fee, classroom, et cetera? Just point of information.
No. Anyone who's eligible for the program has to prove that their low-income and income guidelines were funded by grant to serve that population.
Thank you.
Is there any more, any more questions, any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Milford Prevention Council and the City of Milford, Milford Police Department, for the configuration, maintenance, update, and distribution of Public Engines Inc., TIPSOFT V5 Software, and to authorize the Mayor, Police Chief, City Attorney, to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate the said MOU.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'd like to ask Officer Jeff Nielsen, Sergeant Jeff Nielsen, to come up and see if he can answer a couple of questions that the Board might have, if he would.
Good evening. Wendy Gimms from Milford Prevention Council as well. She's Director of the Milford Prevention Council, and they're providing the funding for the TIPSOFT program, for us to actually put this into effect within the city here. Can you hear me okay now?
You could just give us a brief description of exactly what that program entails.
Absolutely. TIPSOFT is a, it's an application for crime reporting tips, and it's not to be used for 911 purposes, it's for things that we're gonna investigate. For example, if someone, there's a rash of car break-ins in a neighborhood, and someone saw a particular person walking around the area, you know, four in the morning, they may feel that they would be retaliated against that if they reported it, and someone knew that they had contacted the police. So, this program involves anonymity, which is so important in this day and age with a lot of people because of the fear retaliation. Another example could be underage drinking parties, which we partner with Milford Prevention Council for those purposes. With our schools here, and our SROs in place, there's a lot of information within the schools in regards to dangers to our kids. You may, for example, you may have a student that has information on a party that could be going on in the upcoming weekend. They may not want to share that information with someone within the school because they would be labeled as an narc, so to speak. So, having this phone tip app would be a great venue for them to report information to us, so we can investigate those types of things, come up with a strategy, and try and mitigate and perhaps make that party not happen. Reach out to the parents of the house where it would be held, and say, "Do you know this is going to be planned?" And nip it in the bud before it happens. Just to give you an idea, there's three different venues that people can report through with this. One of them is through texting. In this day and age, everyone hopefully has a smartphone or some type of a phone where they can, they text people. The second venue would be mobile phone app. There's a template on the mobile phone app itself that people can fill out and submit to us. The third way is through a web application, so someone can do it through the internet. All three of those venues have anonymity tied to them, or people can say who they are, and will contact them. The nice part about the anonymity part is that when people submit these tips, they'll go through a secure server. And once they go through that secure server, then it's, that tip, that specific tip is given an ID number, a unique ID number. Then, that's sent to a second secure server, where it's assigned a second number, so it's scrubbed. Then that ID number is sent back to the tipster. Now they know, they've acknowledged, and have a receipt that they've sent that tip in, we've received it, but that unique number also provides them with a way to have conversation with us in the future, without us even knowing who they are. So, it's a beautiful cycle. It's a great venue. I think once people understand this, through marketing, some of the ideas we're looking to do with Prevention Council was, you know, through social media, marketing this, and a rollout with our schools. And we've contacted Board Education. Everyone's on board with this, if it does get approved and goes through. I do have some handouts for you as well here, if you want to look at them afterwards. Want to get them? Just in the middle, I can pass them out. And the handout that you're being presented with just goes through a little bit of history of Public Engines Inc., the company we're dealing with. They've been in existence for 16 years, and with, you know, obviously, the, with industry, with cell phones and mobile phones, and the use of email, well, within the last five to eight years, they've grown tremendously in this market. And you can see on the second page of this, it goes into, or third page, it goes into customer base. They have over 1,000 customers nationwide right now. The United States Air Force, United States Navy use them with their intelligence reporting bureaus. It's right on their websites. LAPD, New York PD, huge, huge municipalities use this, all the way down to small municipalities, and it's global. And they've had some great successes with this. Nationally, in 2014, TIPSOFT reported that they had 2.4 million tips registered with the program. And they've had over 240,000 arrests as a result of those. That's a 10% hit ratio, which is very good for their market, they say. So if you look at the first page, you can kind of read through this, and again, it's, the three venues are explained there, submitting by a text, and I did a little screenshot for you there, just to kind of show you how that works. So what they would do is, we would create a keyword for Milford, which we would probably use, "Milford." People would put a short code in, and that, CRIMES, if you look where it says, C-R-I-M-E-S, 274637. That can be entered into your phone as a contact. So, when we do this marketing campaign, this is how we would market it, that people can put this in if they want to do a direct text to us for this. Once it's in there, they just have to put the keyword, specific for Milford, in a space, and put whatever the tip is. That's the first way, and it's that easy, and it's real time. It's like when you text or email someone, you know, a friend or relative, it happens that quick. And again, I just want to emphasize, it's not a replacement for 911. And we've spoke with other agencies throughout the state here, there's about seven or eight in Connecticut that use this, as well as people throughout the country, and they've never had any issues with this as far as it being mistaken for 911, because it is expressed when you first use either the phone app or the web app, and it's expressed at the end of it in the Terms of Service as well. So it's pretty well-covered, and we would cover it in marketing as well. If you look at the second page of the handout, this gives you a few screenshots of the mobile phone app, and how to select an agency. And there's two ways they can do this. They can either go to their privacy settings, and set their phone, and put those on, and all they have to do is search community, hit the button, and it'll bring up all the police departments in their area, based on their GPS on their phone. The second way to do it is, you would go in, and it would select the country, state, and then the municipality that they're looking for. The third way to do this would be through the, via web tip, email, and you can see on the third page there that there's an actual form. So on that form, we would have our department, Milford Police Department, on the top, enters dropdown menus and fill in the blanks for people. So whatever information they can provide us, think about something you may have seen when you were driving around before, and you may not remember all the details, but when people have this on their phone, or on their internet, on their web, they can look it up, and if there's some things that they didn't realize, it might be, you know, in the back of their mind, they can, this may extract it and bring it forward. So it's a very useful tool. And I think right on here, you can actually see the reference of 911, before and after, when people are using the web application of this. On the last page, again, it goes into customer base, it talks a little bit about the agencies that use it, federal, local, government. I just spoke to a salesman, he just came back from a business trip last week, and the DEA, the US Marshals Office are very interested in using our program as well, so they had a week of visiting with them and going through their applications, and they seemed pretty pleased with it. So, I'm pretty confident in this vendor, and they have a very good product, and we're looking forward to implementing it. Just the last part of this is highlights of the TIPSOFT program, and again, I went through some of these already. The anonymity, the two-way communication, which is huge for people, again, because they can still remain anonymous. We don't have to know who they are. And I could tell you, I go to a lot of Neighborhood Watch meetings, and several of you here have been through our Citizens Academy, so you know how we operate. You know, we encourage the community to get involved, and Milford has a very good community base here as far as people being engaged. And I think that this tool would allow just to move one step further with that. If you go through the rest of this, ease of use with the reporting for the citizens, and ease of use for us law enforcement personnel. Unlimited online training, which is huge. You know, we've explored other options before, and this by far is the best for us, because we may have new officers that get put into our administrative tree for the notification process for these tips when they come in. Well, now there's an easy venue for them to train, because they can just go online at any time, and we don't have to set up appointments with people to come down and visit with them. It does have an option for crime alerts. I know that we use Milford Alerts here, within the city. This also has a crime alerts portion of that, which allows us to attach photos if we want to do that. So we can send out a photo of a missing person or a wanted suspect if we need to, for all the people who opt into this program. It's a very, it's a very unique tool. As you can see, there's no premium cost to the citizens to sign up and use this. We can put the web button up on our webpage on the police department and/or the City of Milford website, if approved. So people can click right on, they can sign up and learn and read how to use this through all three venues I explained to you before. They also provide customer collateral for advertising. Between us and the Prevention Council, we have a very strong marketing position with the local media within Connecticut here, so I think we'd be very successful with that. And last but not least, it's just community relations, it's transparency, and it's encouraging citizens and our students and others to get involved and be our eyes and ears, because we can't be everywhere at every time. And we're always looking for people to get involved and engage with us, and give us information to make our community safer. So I think, you know, by approving this, it's a step in the right direction to just further what we need to do within the city here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Nielsen. Any questions for Sergeant Nielsen? Alderman Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
How will people hear of it? Is this gonna be advertised?
Yes. Yes, we are developing a marketing campaign with Prevention Council, and again, the custom collateral that the vendor provides for us as well, we're gonna kind of put that into a pool and come up with the best strategy we think we need to do. We've done some other things in the past with marketing, with Drug Take Back Days, you've probably seen those in the past. We've been very successful in Milford with those, a lot more successful than other communities, where we, you know, we've come second and third with collecting prescription drugs for people, based on our marketing, through billboards, social media, and other venues. And again, reaching out, I think, to the students here is gonna be huge for us.
Yeah.
Because this is gonna be a great tool for them.
Don't text messages usually send with their number attached to them? So is there something that someone can put in when they're doing a text message over to you guys, that they could say, "Hey, I want this private"?
Well, that's what this system does. Any, if it's a text message, or if it's through the mobile app, or if it's through an email, that goes... an email, that goes, before I was touching on the servers, that'll go to the first server, it gets, it's given a unique ID number. Everything is scrubbed, and it goes to a second secure server, then it comes back down to the tipster again. So it's wiped clean of any data that's identifying the person sending information.
Who receives the text in your department?
We'll have an administrative tree, based on what type of tip it is. So, if it's a school-related tip, we would have the school resource officers involved. If it was a narcotics or a vice-type tip, then we would have our narcotics and vice detectives. General burglary would go to our detectives. Any patrol division complaints would go to them, but there would be a few of us that would also be in charge, we would oversee all the tips that would come in, to make sure that there was people looking at those and making sure they're filtered to the right places.
And just one more question. Who will be able to utilize, will they be able to utilize this in other departments? Like, let's say that someone's in Bridgeport and they see something happen. Is this app being able to be used in other departments as well?
Yes, we can actually forward, so if, you know, if something was sent to us and it was the wrong information, it was for, say, Trumbull or New Haven, because I know they use this program.
Yeah.
We would be able to forward those tips to them.
How quick does it get over to you?
If I texted you now, that quick.
Wow, nice.
And what it does, it'll send us a link. So if it came back to me, I would get a link that would bring me to my dashboard as an investigator for the system, and I would go and look up the tip. You're welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Hello there.
I'm a graduate of the Police Academy, the Citizens Academy. Fabulous. While I see a lot of merit to this, I have some questions, and there's just nagging in the back of my mind, there's something a little big brother-ish about this that gives me a little pause. You mentioned narcs before, and I felt like, well, you might be making narcs out of the entire city. And I guess I worry about any abuse of the system. Say there's neighbors that don't like other neighbors, and they decide to send a tip about something that may or may not be true. I mean, how are we protected as taxpayers for any false claims or any type of problems that might arise through this anonymity? And I guess I have a second part to that question, about anonymity. I hate that word.
I had to practice it before I came, don't worry. Attorney Berchem helped me out with it.
Why can't we, as citizens, call something into the police department and be anonymous? Why do we always have to give our name? I mean, if we can now do it, if we're going to be able to do it through texting and a mobile app, why can't we then do it just by calling the police department and saying, "I want to remain anonymous"?
And I think I'd take both your questions.
Okay.
I'll put them into one answer for you here. When we receive information as law enforcement officers, we have to take that information, look at it, vet it, and figure out whether or not, A, is it actionable, and B, is it a violation of the law? And when we look at those things, we have to take information in. Say, for example, someone said that they saw a person on the corner of, I don't want to use any streets, we'll say Main Street and John Street, I don't want to use anything in Milford here, and they saw a person on the corner, and they said, "We're selling drugs." Well, say there's four people on the corner, there are five people, and they're all standing in separate locations. We wouldn't know who that person was, so we'd have to go out there and do more investigation to figure out what is going on. So same thing with your point there, is that we would have to gather information and then go out there and actually look and maybe see something, or ask other people around, do a neighborhood survey, or try and gather other intelligence. Do we have previous complaints of this, which we can put into that and say, "Okay, you know, we got this tip, but let's look back two weeks ago, we just got more information from these other people. How credible is this?"" And then work off that credibleness and come up with a plan and a solution to solve that problem. So it's, and people can report things anonymously. The downfall to that sometimes is if it's something that could result in arrest and we need probable cause, we would need a statement from some people for that. And I think we talk about that in our Citizens Academy a lot, too, is that, that's one of the big questions we always get asked, you know, "Why do I have to leave my name and number?"" Well, some things we can act on, and some things we can't. It depends on the severity of the crime, it depends what type of crime it is, and it depends on what type of information we get.
I guess I also, I also have, I worry about taking advantage of it, you know, particularly teenagers possibly fooling around, just really kind of jamming on the whole app just out of spite or for whatever reason. And how much does that add to your workload?
Well, we've actually reached out and we did our research and spoke to other departments about that, because it was one of my concerns, misuse of the system. And they said, "It's a very low rate of that." They said, "Almost none." People take it pretty seriously. I know, like, for example, 911, we don't get a lot of 911 pranks like we used to either. It's, you know, people take it seriously, and I think with the proper marketing, and I think with the, again, the relationships in the schools with the SROs, I think people, the kids may take this a little more seriously and understand it. We can follow up on that. I did talk to one agency, and they came up with a strategy on putting that out to the public and expressing the dangers in it, and they had a few incidents, and they said they just dropped, and nothing else happened after that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Jeff and Wendy. As Chair of the Milford Prevention Council, I'd just like to thank all the work Jeff has done and Wendy's done, because this is a couple of years going on now, because the first vendor that we had, there were a lot of problems, and it wasn't as clear-cut, and we weren't really comfortable with what was going on. And further research, and I know Jeff has done a lot of work in this area, we found the vendor that really produced the product that we can really trust. And like any other thing, you know, it's only as good as the instrument and the tool you have in your hand. And I think, just as a matter of fact, the other night with the shootings in town, if somebody saw something, they could have been reporting this. And so it's true to life, it's instantaneous, and, you know, the anonymity here is top-notch. Among the other facets that we talked about, excuse me for my voice, and all of the highlights of the Tips Off, and I think the biggest thing here is the collaboration and the meaningful working together of the community and Milford Prevention Council. We've been branding ourselves, we're out there, the kids know it, we do a lot of programs that the community is well into, and parents are buying into this, and it's for these people, you know, who really do the work behind the scenes, Jeff and Wendy. So I congratulate you and thank you for all your hard work, and I hope that we all realize that this is an asset to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. And I do just want to add that this is something that has actually came to the Prevention Council from the community. The students have asked for this, some of the beach associations have asked for this for many years to have this anonymous app, and it's just something that we want to be able to say that we were able to follow through and give back to the community.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Sergeant Nielsen, thank you for the very detailed information. My question is to the Director, Director Gibbons. I know that this is a cost of $2,700. Is the Milford Prevention Council going to pay for this moving forward, year after year, or is it just for the initial start?
We have secured funding for the initial year, Milford Prevention Council, through a grant from the United Way, and then through another grant to supplement that from the local prevention council. We have talked about that with the police department, perhaps starting to be able to put that into their city budget. However, I will be continually searching for, submitting it into some of my grants that I receive, and we've also had some funders state that they would perhaps donate to this. So we will actively be looking.
Thank you.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you. Brief question. Because an individual user of the app is able to use a browser and type into it as opposed to using pre-selected topics, if there is a, if there's information that comes in that's not related to criminal activity, what are the protocols that exist for those departments within Milford?
For example, if it was like a complaint, like a Public Works, there was a void in a road or something of that nature, we would forward that to the appropriate agencies. If it was an animal control issue regarding a loose dog somewhere, or Public Works with a pothole, for example, we would forward that to the proper people.
Are those protocols in place?
We use that in place now with our, what we do every day business, so this wouldn't change that at all, it would run in line with what we do every day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Sergeant Nielsen or Ms. Gibbons? Thank you very much for your generous information.
Mr. Chairman, just want to make a note before you take action, I have to apologize to Alderman Vitale. You'll look in the MOU, initially, his predecessor was named, and then we corrected that, but we, I believe, we didn't use his full name. So, if this MOU is approved by this board, I just want Alderman Vitale to rest assured that it'll be Raymond G. Vitale, V-I-T-A-L-I.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
All right, after all our discussion, we'll break it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8H.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached solar power and services agreement between GRE 366, Milford Library LLC, and the City of Milford for the installation and operation of solar photovoltaic system on city-owned property located at 57 New Haven Ave, and to authorize the Mayor, Public Works Director, and the City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said agreement.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8I.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached solar power and services agreement between GRE 364, Milford Husatonic LLC, and the City of Milford for the installation and operation of solar photovoltaic system on city-owned property located at 1255 Warren Oak Road, and to authorize the Mayor, Public Works Director, and the City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item 8J.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding the Historic Document Preservation Trust, and to authorize the Mayor, Finance Director, City Clerk, and the City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant acceptance.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item 9, there is no new business. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Budget Memo Transfers, Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item Number 10A.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the consideration of Budget Memo Transfers, Number 5 and 6, Fund 10, FY15.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, Moving on to Refunds, Alderman Vecarelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consideration of refunds in the amount of $7,650.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
For purposes of making an amendment, we have the amended language in front of us. I'd like to offer a change that reflects that Item 17 on the original agenda for Item 11A has been removed. That amount is $211.66, and so therefore, the new amended total should reflect $7,388.84. I so move.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. The motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 12, Reports of Standing Committees. Yes.
Absolutely.
The meeting is now returned. Any, Item Number 12, Reports of Standing Committees, are there any reports? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ordinance Committee met this evening and recommended with a 3 to 2 vote an ordinance establishing Chapter 18, Planning Section Article 21 Historic Preservation Commission, 18-218 through 18232 of the Milford Code of Ordinances. This is an ordinance establishing the Milford Historic Preservation Commission, which would be an at-large commission for the city to advise homeowners that would be on the state or that have applied for, or are on the state or national registry of historic places as a local commission overseeing an inventory of homes in that, in the city, not otherwise covered by the historic district. Again, we voted it with a 3 to 2 vote, recommended to the full board. I'd like to present it as a motion for consideration by the full board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Frank Smith.
I've already kind of covered a lot of this, but in the ordinance meeting, we just, we wanted to point out again, this particular motion was brought before us in January. Members of this board, with, I believe, very good justification, feared the possibility of an intrusive jurisdiction of this new commission that would be able to somewhat, in one way or another, control the destiny of private homeowner's properties. Although it was implicit in the language then, I felt they were justified in those observations. We brought it back, the City Attorney's Office went through it, City Attorney and Tony Weeks in the City Attorney's Office. We did have a short meeting with some members of this board, including the minority leader, Mr. Ginatasio, and we concluded the new language, which includes this caveat that the commission and the establishment of this commission would be completely, the homeowners identified within the historic, as having a historically significant property, could only be included with their written consent. It was put in very explicitly, very literally, and it is contained in there now, and it was with that that I believe we got a lot more support for it. In my ordinance committee statements, I mentioned, and I'll mention again, I know at one of our meetings, I think Alderman Vitale mentioned, "Well, if there's people interested in this, perhaps it could be just a voluntary organization that could look after the welfare of these historic homes." And certainly, to some extent, these are all volunteers, but I feel, especially in the 375th year of our history, that it is incumbent on the city to take an official recognition and to give a full official capacity to this effort to try to preserve some of our colonial history. As I said in the ordinance committee, this city is 150 years older than the United States itself. The first citizens of Milford were subjects of the King and Queen of England. That's how far we go back. It is critical, and many times, the people that have real estate interests or development interests have no investment whatsoever in the culture, history of this town. I feel that it is important that we recognize that as a city government. I don't think it's going to be a great financial imposition to fund the administrative function of this commission. We have other commissions in town that look after various cultural and preservation matters that come before us, and I respectfully ask every member of this board to honor this. These members that have worked very hard on it here represent a lot of people in town that feel... that feel the same way. And while I do understand reservations people have about putting new bureaucracy in place, I don't feel this is a bureaucracy. I think this is a very, even tempered and very deliberative group of people that will do the best thing for the city, and it's already in the ordinance that no homeowner's rights or ownership, or even to be included on this registry are compulsory in any way. It's all strictly voluntary, and if you're lucky enough to have a historic home and you voluntarily get on the state registry, this is the local body that will be overseeing that and working with the state registry and the national registry. I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, and my colleagues, and I do respectfully ask your support. I ask if you have any questions that really concern you to maybe address them to Mrs. Kramer and the other members of the Historic Preservation Trust that came here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith, and thank you for all the hard work you put into that ordinance, the ordinance that's before us this evening, and all the people in the Preservation Trust that had input to help you along there. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Casey.
Through you to the City Attorney. I just have a question regarding you. Sorry, bud. All right. Yeah. I have a question regarding the interpretation of this ordinance. I know we had a lot of discussion about written consent, opt-out, you know, it's not compulsory. But I just want to be clear, if the property's already listed as in the National Registry of Historic Homes, or some property's already on the State Registry of Historic Homes, and that's already happened, they already have existed, that's already occurred, doesn't this ordinance already now, wouldn't this commission already apply to these properties and already regulate these properties? And if not, where does it allow the properties that are already on the registry? Where do the ordinances allow them to opt out, or allow them not to be regulated by the commission?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Casey, I don't understand your question. This commission is tasked with, or as I understand, to identify with, identify properties not in historic district, not on a state or national register. Identify those properties, communicate, reach out to the property owners, inquire whether they have any interest in seeking such designations, and help them navigate the process to become on the state or national register. For properties already on it, I don't think that this commission would have, would have or would exercise any oversight over them. They would already have the protections inherent with such a designation.
And, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on Alderman Casey's question, I think the real inquiry he had is, if you are listed on the National Registry or the State Registry, and there is an interest of getting off, what is the process? It's my understanding that there is a process of removing a property from the historic registry. For example, if a tsunami comes and decimates a particular historic structure, or a storm surge like we saw for Storm Sandy or Storm Irene, there are mechanisms to have that property removed from the National Registry.
But just to be clear, under 18-220, if the house is already on the National Registry of Historic Places and/or the State Registry of Historic Places, it's considered a protected property and apply, and that's what's subject to being regulated by the commission. Is that correct? That's the way I read it.
I'm sorry. Alderman Casey, can you repeat that question? I understand that protected property in 18220 is the definition of protected property. I guess I'm...
Right, and that includes property that's already on the registries, right? It's not just property that's under consideration. So if you're already on the registry, how can you opt out?
I think currently, there are nine properties in the City of Milford on the National Registry. One is the Washington Bridge, one is St. Peter's Church, one, I believe, is the courthouse. The Green is not yet on the historic registry. And there are a few others, but Chamber Building, and there are a few others, most notably their public structures.
So this seems kind of superfluous. There's no existing properties that they're going to regulate that's already on the National Registry of Historic Properties, I'm sorry, Historic Places and State Registry of Historic Places? Or nine that's public buildings, or?
They're not necessarily all buildings. There, I think, are two bridges that are on that registry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just have a question, maybe Attorney Bertram can answer. If this is adopted, how many houses will it encompass? What's the pool, the number of houses that would fall into this criteria?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Giannatassio, I believe there was a chart with 25 homes that Mr. Platt had up.
What?
Twenty homes.
So really, the ordinance is being put in place, if it's adopted, in regards to 20 houses that the commission would want to identify outside of the district? Is that correct?
Well, we, if I may, we identified...
For the purposes of starting somewhere, we identified houses from the 18th century. So they were, and in fact, there are two houses in Woodmont that are date to 1600s, late 1600s. So we wanted to start somewhere, and we thought that those were the houses that were most in jeopardy, if you will, because they're not in a historic district, they have no state or register listing, and they are, you know, important examples. Every, and I photographed them all. I didn't dare set up an audiovisual presentation for you this evening, and I also wouldn't have done that anyway without the homeowners here, but they are all outstanding examples of their particular architectural style. So that's where we started. We're not saying it's only those properties, but for the purposes of starting somewhere and making it a little bit more manageable, that was how we started.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up with Ms. Kramer, have you gotten any feedback, Ms. Kramer, in regards to these 20 potential applicants? I mean, is it...
As a matter of fact, we had a presentation last Sunday. We had a spokesperson come down from the State Historic Preservation Office, and prior to that, we sent out letters to these various homeowners, and several showed up. We had snow that day as well, and I had several follow-up emails about, could I somehow get the information about the presentation to them through an email form? But one gentleman showed up, and his wife had some similar concerns that I'm hearing this evening, and after the presentation, he told me that he was ready to sign his house onto the state register. So I consider that a small victory. One is better than none, so.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you. So these people are well-informed of...
They have been contacted by, we sent out a letter. In fact, I think I sent a copy of the letter, or a similar letter, to the Board of Aldermen, telling them that their house has been identified as being historically or architecturally important, and that we are working towards this ordinance, and we would like their opinion, their input, and that they would be hearing from us. We were going to try to do a follow-up.
Ms. Kramer, I'd like to pose a question. How do you feel about the fact that if this list is generated, that it comes before the Board of Aldermen for approval, before it's submitted?
Well, I guess I don't really see the need for that, because, first of all, we added into the language that we need the consent of the homeowner, the written consent of the homeowner, number one, and as the Mayor pointed out...
Not to interrupt, but I need to interject.
Okay.
In the beginning, when we first met, there was no written consent. This was something that we asked you to amend and add.
Which we did, right?
And we appreciate that. We truly do.
But it wasn't enough.
Well, looking into it further, what stood out to me was the fact that we didn't have any oversight as a board, because we are granting the ordinance, if it's adopted.
Right.
So we feel like we're responsible, in a sense.
Ah, well...
That's how I feel. I mean, and if we're going to have this partnership, then I think that we should be included. How do you feel about that?
I'm not sure what kind of oversight you mean, though, I guess, is what I would want to know.
Well, we want to be updated. We want to know what the list is annually. We want to see if people are remaining on the list, if they're off the list, if someone new wants to, you know, opt in, per se, and we're not going to have that purview.
I don't have any problem with the Board of Aldermen being notified of what the list is, and certainly, every time we add a house to the state register, notifying the board is not, we think that's victory. We're happy to share that with you. As far as opting out, we have already stated repeatedly that the best way to opt out is to not opt in. So we are going to make it very clear. I mean, I passed out the, and I had a stack of those at the Sunday meeting, saying exactly what the state register can and cannot do, what it does and does not represent. So obviously, anyone who signs up is going to be very clear, and with their full understanding, and that's how I see it. I...
I see it like, it sounds like these people are well-informed to begin with. I think anybody that, and you agree?
And not only are they well-informed, they've already purchased a historic home.
Right.
Or inherited it.
Exactly. So my feeling is, listen, if I'm going to buy a house that's that old, I'm buying it for a reason. I know what I'm buying, because that's what I want.
Right.
So with that being said, they know where to go for help, and you know who they are because they live in that house.
Right. I understand that. So you're saying, what's the need of the ordinance, then?
Well, intuitively, it really doesn't make sense, because you can opt out. So why have it? Why don't you just do the work and network with the people, and educate them, and guide them? Why do you need the city to be in the backseat?
We like, we like to think that the city would want to have preservation be a part of its long-term plan.
Well, the city has. We've purchased property.
Right, but...
We've purchased several properties.
We also lost...
And we've preserved them.
We also lost a huge part of Gulf Street.
Well, that's my next question. Gulf Street, you tried to enforce or create a historic district.
I did not personally. I wasn't involved, and you can't enforce a historic district.
Well, people tried to organize.
Right.
And it didn't evolve.
It is evolving.
Oh, it is evolving.
Well, there are, right now, 12 houses for sale on Gulf Street. So there is a big turnover, and that is a problem. I know that there has been a group canvassing there, and then some people moved, other people dropped out of the effort. I do know that there is a resurgence of interest. I wasn't on board for that, but...
Let's talk about the people that dropped out.
Well, when I say dropped out, I think they got their, I think they were dispirited and worn out. So sometimes, you know, things happen. People take a backseat and decide that they're going to back off for a little while.
And they want to be left alone, because it's their home.
No, I'm talking about people who are going and knocking on doors, trying to create another historic district. Yes, I understand that people in the United States, a homeowner's right to his or her property is sacrosanct. I understand that, I hear that. However, I think that an ordinance such as this would go a long way to garnering the kind of interest that we are trying to achieve, and trying to put preservation, or let's say, sanction preservation, if you will. That's all I'm saying. Yes, could we go knock on doors and get people to sign up? Yes, we could, but a historic district commission serves a larger purpose still, in my view.
And you have presently, what's in place? Explain the Preservation Trust, explain what we have presently...
Well, I live in the first historic district, which was established in 1976. I can say that we have put a very large addition on the back of my house. We went before the Historic District Commission, which Mr. Bertram's father is chairperson of or commissioner of. I have never found it to be an onerous process. We submitted our plans. They said, "Good luck," and "Congratulations." There's a second historic district south of the Green. Mr. Platt would know better when that was established, five years ago, maybe? Yeah. Oh, Mr. Veccharelli, you would know that, too. So, you know, I mean, we have these two historic districts, but we have many valuable, important properties that are scattered throughout the city, and we are trying to give them the distinction that they deserve and a sense of stewardship.
Well...
If people are willing, that's great. If they're not, that's it.
I could appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't necessarily know or agree if an ordinance is the proper vehicle, only because, again, it does have the option to opt out, and I don't think that the city should take a position when it comes to somebody's private property. I don't think that, respectfully. So I wanted to amend it. I wanted to have some Board of Aldermen approval, some oversight, but my amendment failed. So with that, I respectfully am not going to be able to support this ordinance.
I understand that. I had a sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just as brief background, I think as a follow-up to some of the history that Alderman Giannatassio inquired about, this proposal came about as a result of some enabling legislation that the state passed about two years ago to allow municipalities to, in addition to adopting or installing historic districts, to recognize the historic structures, the historic properties within a town. Sometimes, those historic homes are not necessarily contained within one contiguous footprint. They're sprinkled from one end to the other end of the 26 square miles of Milford, for example, and it allows you to identify those pieces of history that are truly historical without casting a net over those properties that don't necessarily have any historical value to them. The other distinguishing characteristic with this law is that there is the ability of the property owner to control his or her own destiny. They have the ability to opt into this. They have to, in a very clear, written way, say that they want to be part of this. Once they sign up, they are then entitled to many incentives. They're entitled to state tax incentives. The Historic Preservation Trust just put on a presentation with some experts a weekend ago. They're entitled to some incentives through the Department of the Interior at the federal level, as well as a whole host of other grants that are out there, both on the state basis and a federal basis. They're also, if you're going to do any construction... There also, if you're going to do any construction, this allows homeowners that are on the State and National Registry, if they do want to improve their house, they have the ability to waive certain building code requirements that everyone else is subject to. So it actually gives those homeowners a little bit more leeway and a little bit more freedom. So there are a lot of incentives, and that's why you sign up for this. That's why the impetus is for the installation of this new commission.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And in a second, is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through anybody who will listen, I guess. The passion is really high tonight. We're hearing words like "destiny," "opt-out," "opt-in." We're hearing whatever needs to be done is being done. We're hearing other kinds of things of the caveats that our chair from the Ordinance Committee has put forth. Mr. Mayor has indicated all of those advantages that go along with getting into the district and containing what's happening. We're hearing the fact that you buy a house, you know what you're buying, you buy it for that particular reason. I really appreciate, Mrs. Kramer, all of your work that you've done, and with all the volunteers. I appreciate all the hard work that went into writing the ordinance. But I'm still confused, and I still... I'm not so confused as to leaning on the fact that I can't see another layer of bureaucracy. I know we talk with passion that there isn't... It's not another layer. It's going to do the good. I hear that we need to celebrate the 375th by doing something like this, but it's there already. What more can we do? It's there already. You opt out, you opt in for all the advantages you have that you can take with your property, that you can do. Congratulations, you can put an addition on. If you're in there, you'll probably get more favoritism than if you're not. But again, it's another burden on the populace. And if that individual knows what he's doing going into it, buying that particular home, he knows the advantages of it, he's already been connected with it, and I feel as though, for those reasons, I can't support establishment of a commission. Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, to Ms. Kramer, I just have one quick question, if you can come up to the podium, please. And I appreciate you answering all our questions. I know that, you know, this is important to us, so that's why we're asking these questions.
I understand.
I just want to be crystal clear, because I know I asked the city attorney and the mayor, and I'm just going to ask you. I think this might clear up my initial confusion I had about the ordinance. Currently, what is the inventory, if anything, for residential properties? Let me ask a little better. How many residential properties are currently included in the National Registry of Historic Places and State Registry of Historic Places in Milford? How many residences are currently included in that?
Residents?
Correct, residents.
Private residences.
Yeah, are there any?
Do you know the answer to that? Are there any, Dick? On the national, you asked?
The National Registry of Historic Places, or the State Registry of Historic Places, because that would be both included.
May I answer that? First of all, the national register really is outside of what we're talking about. We're talking about the state register. Now, yes, there are properties in Milford, about 10 properties roughly. Laurelton Hall, the Taylor Building, St. Peter's Church, et cetera. The mayor's already given the list. The Hebrew Congregation of Woodmont, et cetera. Plus, the River Park, National Register Historic District. That is the existing historic district number one, up here on North Street and West River Street, plus Cherry Street, Governor's Avenue, Winthrop Court, and part of West Payne Street. That's all a national register district. Now, any property in the state of Connecticut that is on the national register is also automatically on the state register. We have no properties outside of the national register properties on the state register. When we talked to some of the people up at the State Historic Preservation Office, they expressed surprise. They say, "What? You don't have any more properties on the state register?" And this is true. We don't. So let's forget the national register bit. What we're trying to do is, you know, if anybody wants to opt in on this ordinance, they have first got to apply to the State Historic Preservation Office for state register status. And that's what they have to do first. Now, of course, I will have to also ask Alderman Genitazio, do you have any oversight over the historic districts? Why must you have oversight over this?
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to belabor this. I think we've touched on everything. But I do want to, in Alderman Vitale's remark before, and we had talked about this earlier, that if this is a sense of volunteerism, and people want to opt onto the state registry, why do you need a local committee or a local commission? I think some of the information that's been revealed here indicates that the state registry needs to have an enabling body at the local level that's going to be able to advise and work with the property owners, to understand and to work with the state registry. Once again, this is a list of properties that all go back to the 18th century that were compiled by people in this room. Some of the people in these homes may not know that they live in a house that was constructed in 1749. But if they do, and they want to have somebody, a local resource, to work with, who is going to have the historic, the architectural, and the local community involved in it, that's exactly what this committee is intended to do. It's not to institutionalize or bureaucratize it. Once again, it's not Mrs. Kramer going to your door and saying, "Your house was built in 1749, and I got a clipboard and a gun, and you got to sign." These people might be advised by this commission, because they're involved in it, but it is completely at the consent of the homeowner to opt in or out. Then, yes, I believe it is imperative that the city have some institutional civilian body that will be able to do the necessary research, as Mr. Platt has done for many years, but will be able to work with this board and other boards to help maintain and to promote the idea of historic properties and how important it is to this city. And one last thing is, we vote on things here, like the firehouse. And sometimes, we've had discussions in this board about what the priorities are. Is it always going to go to the ones with the most money? Is it going to go to the developer that can come in and just pay whatever it takes to come and bulldoze away, you know, 300 years of history? These people have no investment. This is where the civilian, where the people of the city are represented, where they can actually stand up to commercial interests that will almost always win out in the end. If you have a piece of property, and somebody... And even if the homeowner is inclined to do it, find a group of concerned citizens that might try to save that from the wrecking ball. Nobody else is going to do it, because at the end of the day, money's going to win out, and what is so dear to us, our historic properties in this city, will be lost forever. You're going to lose them anyway. I mean, you know, progress is progress. Houses will fall. There's no doubt about it. But this is a way that we have that ensures that at least there's some people within this city that are looking out for that. We are free to question their decisions. They would be happy to submit any houses that go on the state registry, and we can discuss it here. But I think we may manifest the advantages of this, and the fact that even though it's an opt-on voluntary membership, it is still something that requires local oversight and local advice to the state registry and to the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion? Alderman Vitale, let's not try to repeat any more than we already heard, right? Thank you.
Whatever I have to say, right? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to piggyback on what you had to say, Mr. Alderman Smith, the fact is that you buy a house, and you don't know it's built in 1790, whatever. You know, obviously, you bought the house, and obviously, you know when it's built. Preservation of properties, we went through this, where that property next to the golf course was voted down, that the city didn't take over to preserve, and could have made better use of. And now they're talking about putting houses there, or whatever it can be. So, you know, we can't be talking, having a double standard here, if we're going to preserve and knowing what we're preserving. And I'm all for the preservation of homes, believe me, in the city, and keeping it that old New England kind of peace here. But, you know, we voted many ways on this board for properties that we should have acquired, and we didn't acquire. So, again, opting out, opting in, in getting, you know, your choice, whether you know what you bought, and I, for those reasons, as I repeated before, and I won't repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Any more discussion? Alderman Shaw.
I promise to be brief, because I think everything that can be said has been said, and I do want to thank everybody. I just want to point out that this... I never thought this would be controversial. I am actually shocked and slightly mortified. This happens in communities all across the state and across the country. This is business as usual in many communities, especially one like Milford, that has a great history. I feel that there's misinformation, but I feel that you guys have done a great job. I did point out, and I will point out again, that this has been on the agenda twice. It was part of the Ordinance Committee, was postponed several times. The community has had every opportunity to come before and speak publicly, for or against this. I haven't heard one voice against. My email inbox has not received one. The only controversy I can find appears to me, and I mean this in all respect, manufactured. But we have an opportunity here to do the right thing, to allow homeowners who have historic homes to voluntarily be part of a group that the commission can help, receive grants, and money, and tax credits, as in educational. Anyway, I've said enough already. I thank all of you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Shaw. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just... I feel disappointed that some of my colleagues on the other side, they're so passionate, they're so passionate, but they won't let the Board of Aldermen have some oversight over what's happening. And they reject an amendment, and, you know, where we can, you know, become a partnership. And that's really why I'm not voting in favor of this. And I want the commission to know that, okay? So... And to Frank Smith's point, you know, Mr. Vitale made a great point. I mean, we have an 830-G application before us on land that this city could have purchased, and now we're going to have to fight that. So we are in favor of preserving Milford. And I want to make sure that that's crystal clear. And in response to Mr. Platt's comment, if we're going to create the ordinance from this board, and it's coming out of this board, then yeah, I'm entitled to oversight. You better believe it. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Fontana?
No.
Alderman Gurman?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
No.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Kubek?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Stamford?
Yes.
Alderman Vecarelli?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
The motion passes. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in General Demolition, Section 7 and 6-10. This was also an ordinance that was proposed at the January meeting, and along with the Historic Preservation Commission, was deferred or postponed, and was taken up again by the Ordinance Committee tonight. Basically, what this ordinance is, is it defines a waiting period, as well as what's in the original ordinance. The waiting period upon which the Building Department receives a permit application before demolition can go forward was 90 days. The new proposed ordinance that came up in January extended that to 180 days. Members of this board brought that into question, felt that that was onerous, it was overreaching and extremely inconvenient to homeowners and people trying to sell or to buy a house. We compromised, and a new ordinance has been put forward, adopted, or was recommended by a three-to-two vote from the Ordinance Committee, basically making that waiting period 120 days as opposed to 180. So it's 30 days more than it was. This is a way mainly to protect considered properties that we feel are culturally, historically, or otherwise valuable. This is not just a historic district proposition. This is... Will come from the Building Committee. But before demolition can occur, 120-day waiting period would be invoked. And again, it was voted out of the Ordinance Committee with a three-to-two vote to recommend. I would like to propose it to the full board as a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Fontana?
No.
Alderman Gurman?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Kubek?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Stamford?
Yes.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
The vote was 11-4. Motion passes. Are there any more reports of any special committees? Seeing none, there is no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Vecarelli. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.